Yeah, all right, let's talk to the Lord for praise God, our heavenly Father, as we require our horses to stay and come to you. We want to thank you for all your many, many blessings in life. We want to thank you, Lord, for just being with us and giving us a safe journey. And Lord, just put in your hand of guidance and protection upon us. And Lord, I know that there are several people, my friends and many others, that is sick, in the hospital and struggling right now. Lord, we just ask you to put your hand upon them. Now, heavenly Father, give us the protection that we need over our employees at the Mineral County and the courthouse, and 911, the sheriff's department, all of them. We just ask a hand of guidance and protection over them. Heavenly Father, be with us, give us knowledge and wisdom to make the best decisions for our county. We ask this in Jesus' name and give you glory. Amen. To the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, three commissioners is here, and Lauren and Eileen, and we've visited, called the worship, called the order. I'm used to doing it, call the order, you got any changes on the agenda?
Okay, there we go. Um, well, we added all these correspondence from Fountain, Kaiser Emergency Medical Service, Community Corrections, Dog, the 3D planning, and the Evaluation Fund Budget, and under correspondence, all of those were added. Uh, the sheriff had some discussion to add, taking out the tow record policy, adding in, um, previous discussion of the preventive resource officers, the sheriff of the professional increase for supervisors, and which has been previously discussed, and then extending the countertop, that was all added. Uh, Mr. Dusenberry had to cancel one tonight, but I pulled him on for tomorrow, and, um, Mr. Simpson was added, so.
Okay.
I might email and work on that one, I'm gonna get it.
Do I hear, uh, what's the free agenda? Some of, I can, I screw that also minutes, you don't?
Yeah, I have to, I have to, actually, now that we're getting the office situated, I have to have them ready for the marching.
We better start it a little early, which can take a while.
Yeah.
Okay, correspondence, Kirk Kessler, uh, he said it's been Kirk Kessler, he was our Republican ballot commissioner. Uh, he said it's been a pleasure to serve as the Mineral County Republican Ballot Commissioner for the last several years. Unfortunately, I must tender my resignation for the pick, for the position effective January one, twenty twenty five. So he's going to, well, that's, I don't know if Lauren had any.
They already had the secondary alternate.
Oh, you did?
So we don't have to worry about that. And we actually don't have an election this year, and the new board member won't get appointed until next January, so we're good.
Okay, also, we have a letter from John Parker. Would like to request that his name be added to the Fountain Public Service Commission Board effective March first, and he says something for your consideration. Uh, also, Public Service District Commission, uh, Fountain Public Service District Commission, uh, since April first, John, George Terrell was appointed to the Fountain Public Service District. Of course, you know, George passed away, good super guy. Uh, and his position to board was to expire anyway on June thirty, twenty twenty six. So they kind of recommend Wayne Oaks signed this for Edela Masters. They would like to see Mr. Parker, uh, pointed to the board, so we'll deal with that in few minutes. Kaiser EMS. Uh, on behalf of Kaiser Emergency Medical Service, we want to reach out and make you aware of the new leadership role for the Department of, uh, Department for the year twenty twenty five. Chief is Michelle Matthews, Assistant Chief is Gaylor, Gaylor, she's, she was a crumb over her, how do you pronounce her last name? Staringer? Staringer, she's a real nice girl. Uh, and Captain Ethan Broadwater and First Lieutenant Derek Kings. These candidates, or three candidates that we bring forward to represent Kaiser EMS for Mineral County Ambulance Authority are as far, are as follows. Michelle Matthews, Galis, Stan, I don't know how you pronounce that, Derek Kings.
Does anyone get one?
They get one, they, so they just need to recommend one out of eleven? Well, yes, or point one, yeah, they, what you're supposed to do is send in two to three names and then we pick them. In fact, they use it for the board where they'd like to have. Okay. Need to correct letter regarding board members. This letter is brought to the Mineral County Community Criminal Justice Board. As you may be aware, attorney Kelly Coon has retired from practicing law. She was active member of her board and filed field of public defender role. I am requesting that attorney Lauren, Lauren Wilson take Mrs. Coon's place on our board. Mrs. Wilson has agreed to become, uh, a member of the Mineral County Community Criminal Justice Board. If you should need anything else, please do not hesitate to contact.
Call over and have Warren send the letter, but I never got around to it.
Yeah, well. Dogwood, date for the rabies clinic. Uh, Saturday, June the seventh, twenty twenty five, nine to ten, at Fort Ashby Primary School.
Nine to eleven.
On, what did I say, nine to ten?
Nine to ten.
I can change that. Saturday, June the fourteenth, from nine to ten, eleven, uh, it'll be at the tractor supply. And, uh, vaccination fee is eight dollars, county tags will not be, be sold there, so.
Please have correct change.
Huh?
Please have correct.
Please have correct change, yes. So that is Saturday, June the seventh, nine to eleven, Fort Ashby Primary School, Saturday, June the fourteenth, nine to eleven, at tractor supply, vaccination shot, vaccine will be eight dollars, uh, tags will not be sold, have correct change. State tax party. No, I don't think we need to read all that, no, I'm not reading that, that's.
No, we're just a cover letter because, um, Beach County.
It's going to be pretty huge. That's pushing, it's my, it basically is, uh, uh, it's just confirming where Jill can authorize the assessed to receive up to two percent of the previous year's projected tax collection. And, um, according, and they've got the code in there, Western New State Code eleven dash one C O. Uh, and that's sent to us by the, yeah, she's, sheets, they're having to say, all right.
Rest of that is just that, if you have any concerns, you can address them.
Correspondence, do we, do those people who want to be part of the different things, do they need to send a letter and request them to be a part of that?
A board?
Yeah.
Well, we have Mr. Parker.
We have two, we have, we have, well, we don't have to deal with Kirk's, because he's going off, right? And you've already got one of them on his board, so we have.
Mr. Parker, you can, you can, is that the question?
Yeah. So we'll move down to the old business. Uh, Mr. Parker, what is your thoughts about putting placing him on the public, Fountain Public Service Commission? I'll make a motion, we approve that. And I second also. Update on the courthouse. The end, but you have nothing on.
I don't have anything except, no, not courthouse.
Now, maybe it's sounding mentioned at twelve, oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute, we missed one. We've got to go back and, uh, for the Kaiser Emergency Services, we've got to appoint one of those three, Michelle, Gaylor, or Derek, to the ambusher.
I mean, you're letting, we're not supposed to do that, or?
You guys just randomly have a recommend three, and then you go for that.
This is, I'll make a motion, we appoint Michelle Matthews, a second. And I agree with that also, okay.
Uh, back to the building. Yes. March twelfth, they're going to be shutting down the power to the courthouse to move the electrical, um, power to the other side of the building. And then, um, that day, the courthouse will be closed. That's also a West Virginia, what's the training session called?
You're having, the commissioners are having an employee training that day.
Yes, that same day, and so that will, I'm waiting on a, um, court order from the judge as far as the people working in the courthouse and payment with people working.
Shouldn't they come to that training if they're working that day? If they're not working to that day, they should show up?
They should, they're getting paid. Yeah, the annex is going to be, yes.
Yeah, and that's okay, it could be a courthouse.
Entire day.
Yes. Just one day, they, they say they can get it done in one day, but it's a possibility, and they're not there too. Um, so that would be to the courier, if they don't have power running.
Well, hopefully between now and then, um, Frontier can get back here and we can get the switch done because, um, before thirty, Chris was here with GST, when everybody powered down, he went over and removed the one switch, moved it over, and he brought it over, and apparently the connection wasn't done, so he had to take it back over, but then he couldn't get it to connect back again. So to that happened, because we need to make sure that that's transferred, but if they don't have that fixed, it will take our networking down on the next side.
Now, we have to approve Mrs. Wilson for Terrell.
Well, she didn't send, I don't have a letter for her yet.
You need it from Mrs. Wilson other than Tara?
The letter from Mrs. Wilson says that she does want to do it. I'm sure she did talk to her, if you guys want to approve it, that's.
It's just still been, get a letter.
Well, she's agreed, it's, she's agreed to become.
Yeah, in the past, you always happen to have.
A letter from.
That's been your.
Yeah. So you want to wait, I'll give a hold of Tara.
You want to prove it, I mean, that you have the letter, but I don't, I just wait up to the next.
This wouldn't, we, we're going to send pending letter.
I might be able to have the letter for our meeting.
I'll second that.
Now, I approve that also, and I'll, I'll call Tara in the morning.
No, I'll get with, I'll get with Lauren.
You're going to get with, oh, you know Lauren?
Yeah.
Okay, good deal.
Also, on the building stuff, March, uh, sixth, they're going to be going through, um, E D plumbing's going to be going through the old courthouse. I've been out performing the system for that. Only thing's I got.
Okay, that's all you got on the courthouse, update on Park Project, you're around. If you have anything.
Um, I, I need the minutes, which I texted, um, Lauren earlier, send it to, we got, grant that we, and water, and land water conservation, whatever, L W C S, um, that showed that you all voted on, us not moving forward with that. Uh, or I need to do a resolution, so she said she probably had it by the beginning of March, but we'll send it.
The update on C D B G, uh, health ward building, uh, talked to AJ today, uh, groundbreaking is going to be around the end of the month, that's when the construction is going to start. We don't know exactly what day yet, but it's looking good. Everything's really falling into place for him, and bad it is, because he's gotten up so we're just, it's just about very nuts.
I guess this is a drawdown for the health department, number fourteen, yes, that means to me, yes, we got the checks signed, received from the state and issued for twelve thirteen, last meeting. Question to approve it and authorize president to.
Well, if approved budget amount is two million, nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred off.
And there's a, this drawdown.
And this, what's this draw, I don't see this draw, Paul, wait a minute, now requesting this drawdown is seven thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars, seventy-five cents.
Did you say drawdown for twelve and thirteen to check something? Yeah, it's at the moment.
And I make a motion, we, um, draw down to seven thousand, six hundred, you know, two eighty dollars, seventy-five.
Yes.
Not authorized.
Authorized, Roger sign.
A second, I'll approve that also, here, let me do that right now.
There's a front page in the last page.
Yes.
Oh, um, Joe, on six fifteen appointment.
Give us one second, Jill, we will be ready, this on the roll and, and probably should, get this done, so we won't forget it. Because I haven't checked today. He, don't worry about it, he's had enough over the weekend, I've seen what they were. I've seen what you ate too, Roger.
Yeah, well, I mean, they had a lot of good candy.
Okay, sorry, Jill, we're a little late.
So, I'd like to ask you, um, I have a part-time employee, named Carson's. Um, she's, uh, September eleventh, she works my front window, receptionist and personal property tax deputy. Um, I'd like to make a question, I have her move full time. The condition that I bring to you is, if you would pay half of her salary out of general fund, and I sent a request to the state, I should know more tomorrow, and ask them to pay the second half of her salary out of eight thou. She does not need health insurance, she's on her husband's health insurance. Um, she's been a true asset to the office, and it was working out great. She answers the phone, she directs into the correct people, it's just making the office move a lot smoother, so.
It's very emotional, when you talk first, um, I make a motion, really, that's my full time employee, you want to read that?
So much pride, I would, I would prove it to kind of be about it.
What happens, you go.
That, that across that vision, they never turned me down before.
I don't.
And that they've always approved whatever I've sent in.
They're pretty good, yeah. That's a good, a good question, of course, it's nothing insurance.
Right. I mean, it's basically staying where it is.
I told her already, you have, we're happy, we're very.
That's why I said I'll pay the other half out of eight thou, if you actually approve it.
I'm, I'm okay with that, as long as you go with free, I don't think I'm in that motion.
I'll amend that, I'm motion to. And I agree with that.
Doesn't matter, if you need it.
Do we need to have you on?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's all you have.
That is all I have, short and sweet.
Okay, so what we'll do. Yes, as says Ms. Bart, I'm up and present to her about the farm worker's job program.
Got some information for you. Over here. Okay, um, doesn't matter where I stand.
You just get, stand.
Whatever do you want. I like to stand, I like to move around, sorry, I'll stand here. Okay, uh, my name is Barbara Fortner, and I'm a career advisor with the National Farm Workers Jobs Program. Um, that is through Telomone Corporation in Moorfield. We do cover, um, Merrill, Hampshire, Hardy, Pendleton, and Grant Counties. Um, the NFJP program is a federally funded program through the Department of Labor, and we work with, um, families who are involved with farm work um, to help them, uh, you know, get training for a different job, or training to help them advance in the job that they're in. Um, we work with the American Job Centers, and we have monit- monitor advocate systems, um, to ensure fair treatment um, to our participants, uh, to qualify for the program. Uh, of course, you have to be a U S citizen and be authorized to work in the United States. And currently, the largest, um, population involved in the NFJP programs are, um, not only U S citizens, but the majority of them are born and raised in West Virginia. Uh, what we do is, like I said, we help people get training or help them get, um, advancement at their job, like both prior to me starting. Um, there was a farmer who had equipment, um, he had employees, but nobody was, um, licensed with C D L to operate the equipment. So, um, the NFJP program paid for some of his employees to get their C D Ls, um, to help him. We work with anybody in the family that is fourteen or older, as long as themselves or a spouse or a parent are involved with farm work. Um, for example, I just enrolled a fifteen-year-old who, uh, his parents both, they had a farm, but they both work outside the farm, so they were technically over income, but because they paid him a little bit of money, um, to help on the farm, I could enroll him just on his income. Um, and he would be considered a youth, anyone from fourteen to twenty-four is a youth, and they have incentives. Um, like if they, uh, do, they're supposed to do a monthly meeting, and if they keep those meetings every three months, they get fifty dollars. Um, when they get their driver's license, they get fifty dollars. They graduate from high school, they get a hundred dollars. If they go on to college, graduate from college, they get two hundred. And then that, there's a list in that packet there that, like a two-page list of all the incentives they can get. And if they want to go to college, uh, or an adult or a youth, if they want to go to school, we do offer, um, tuition assistance, uh, for books, for housing. We offer emergency assistance, um, for rent or nutrition, transportation, babysitting, um, those kind of things. The NFJP thrives because of strong partnerships with local governments. Um, and the NFJP has been in effect since nineteen sixty-four, when President Johnson declared his war on poverty. Um, and the impact of the NFJP goes beyond the farm workers, us trying to, you know, get them better jobs or find them jobs that are stable, because if the farm workers have more money, then they can spend it, which helps the economy of the communities that they live in. So I am trying to, you know, just spread, um, information about the program. Um, and if you guys know of any organizations or anybody that, you know, might would benefit from our program, I would appreciate you passing the information, all right? Now, I haven't been there that long, but if you have a question, I'll try to answer.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill, you've done good work, I hope you get a lot of people applying. I hope there's several.
How do they apply?
Yeah, how do they apply, yeah?
Um, they would have to call the office, and we would set up an appointment, um, and then, um, they would come in and there's an application process.
What's your office setting?
Moorfield.
Where at?
Four oh one Maple Avenue.
Okay.
You have to come over there and visit me.
Do you work with the pilgrims?
Pilgrims, we do have, um, several children, um, whose parents work at pilgrims, because if they work at pilgrims, see, I forgot, then you brought it. If they work at pilgrims, that qualifies them for the program because of working with the raw poultry. Yeah.
That's it.
Do you have a lot of people from this area that work at pilgrims?
There's a lot of people all over the world.
I know.
There's twenty-three nationalities, I think it's twenty-three.
Yeah.
Twenty-one or twenty-three nationalities that work in pilgrims.
Pilgrims, yeah.
So.
I was talking, I was talking to a gentleman the other night, because I also helped with the, up at the college with the VIDA or VITA, or however you pronounce it, the volunteer texting, and there was a gentleman in there that worked at pilgrims that was from France.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you go into pilgrims, I don't know if you've been in.
Oh, yeah.
See the flags, you got state flags, and you got the national flags there, there's twenty-one or twenty-three.
Yeah, I'll count next time I'm over there.
Quite a few of them, I was shocked, but you said, there.
Yeah.
Okay, Barbara.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Be safe going home, tell your mom hi.
I'll tell her.
Okay, since Tom's not here, you want to, let's see, what do we have, update on opioids?
I don't have much, uh, you want to hear some money information? Huh? Do you want to hear some money information on that? Yes, so we have, we have received two checks from the state so far, of course, uh, one was five hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and seven dollars, forty-six cents, that was the original check. And of course, the other check we got last month, there's one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, twenty-eight dollars and eight cents. Uh, we have put the money in a money market account, which the interest has dropped down, it's dropped down to three and a half percent in the money market account. Uh, we have earned so far twenty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars in interest. Uh, we have actually only paid out well other than these checks, so it doesn't include the checks that she recently got done, but we've paid out, we've actually only had sixteen thousand dollars in payouts, which now will be twenty-six and, well, whatever it is. Um, we have committed, as far as, in our, in our meetings, the commissioners have committed to two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. So our bank total, after interest and just the payouts, is seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. But our total after the interest and the commitments is five hundred and three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-four cents.
But you have paid all that out?
No, 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 out of the two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, we've committed, we've only paid out sixteen thousand, rough, whatever.
When do you think that, under the, well?
Well, some of it's like, some of it's for the, to cover half the pro officer salary in each place. Uh, some of it is for Dr. Kervos at W V U, and, um, she is working with them to come up with contract and get a, get a meeting scheduled, so that's still in the, in the works. Uh, so right there was two hundred thousand dollars left, so, yeah, I know, so that was too good. Big jump there.
Has the state indicated when the next one will be?
Uh, it's probably going to be the next year, it'll be once a year.
That paperwork that showed what the distribution is going to be over the next couple of years, what's expected?
Well, yeah, well, yeah, and that paper said that we was only going to get about eighty thousand dollars this year, and we got a hundred and ninety-eight. So that, that was totally all, yeah, and I'm fine with that, so, uh, that was quite a surprise. I don't know. I, I kind of expected each year would be cut in half, and she was kind of close to that, it was less than half of the first year, so. But, anyway.
Okay. The discussion regarding the room.
Do we have anything on that?
I don't think we have anything on that, touch not here. How about, uh, you want to carry the approval?
Yeah, because the way through, we were going to meet again, it's best to have.
The March eleventh, okay, when is, is that much fit? For sure, March eleventh.
Yeah, we're going to move back to the eleventh, okay, now, that, um, the fire department, they left that one there, because will we get a follow-up on that now, or is that somewhere in the next?
Although we already decided that, but I may be wrong. Any audits? Are we waiting on something else?
Thought we were checking. Obviously, we're not going to discuss it tonight.
They have something on legislation about definitely trying to call what it is, you remember? The state had something, legislature, I don't remember, some of this, I can't remember what it's about.
I have to look it up. Or there were two thousand different bills introduced.
I don't know. All right, uh, Joe, I reckon your turn to discuss the regarding the prevention resource office.
Yeah, we wanted to continue discussion, uh, putting the.
Yeah, we wanted to continue discussion, uh, putting the S R O's on.
Civil service?
Okay, I would like them. We can discuss what you want. Um, personally, as far as any. Thing that comes down to salaries or increase in salaries or anything. I really don't wanna make any decisions till after we get our budget done. That's my opinion. That's just, that's my opinion, so. I don't, I don't wanna commit to anything until we get figure out exactly where we wanna be at with everything.
I don't think I. I don't think I looked at that increase when I did my budget, so I will have. I'll have the current numbers from what we had previously. So I can redo. That portion of the budget and have both. For tomorrow to.
If you can, if you can figure out, the, we've had that information now about the increase, so. Yeah, what it would take to, to do the progress.
The, the number I had was forty-five hundred dollars difference per year.
Per officer?
Per officer.
So it's forty-five, how many, so you're, if you get four in there, so you're looking at approximately eighteen thousand dollars. Forty-five, eighteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
But we're also saving. We're adding four officers to the county during. Not just the summer months, but also during the times when there's no school. So, we're adding four deputies to. Run called work investigations, work crashes. Without the added cost of having to put four officers back into the academy. Which. Speaking was. Corporal Haskis, uh, with his intent this summer is possibly use them for work search. We just don't have the manpower where we can pour one or two guys off of, off of their shift and just send them out and do nothing to execute boards.
I mean, that's what we did on before with them when. I mean. We had used them before and I, I don't, I wasn't involved directly with them. Do you remember Roger?
No, I do not.
Uh, they weren't actually under civil service, but I know Shambol, you remember what Shambol was on? Billy Clark, he had done.
Bill did, I know that. I remember Bill.
Yeah, and they would come in and work like through the summer. For us, um. But they weren't under civil service and they were just, I, I don't know how that was all worked out. I don't, I don't know how they did that, but, um. My understanding was they was basically like.
Then you guys just paid it, but the school board didn't reimburse us for that portion. I think it was just out in our county.
Yeah.
So by moving them up to sole service. There is an increase in their pay because they'll be going on civil service.
Go under the deputies pay.
But the difference in them working the summer would actually be less.
And I guess the, just so you guys know, and I understand the whole budget thing, but. They're asking me about it because they don't get paid all summer. Um, and I don't know. What they're going to do, because for the last, since they've all started, they've been getting paid all summer through COVID money somehow through the school.
So they're not under the same contract the school was under?
For summary, yeah, I don't know.
They're not, they're not.
Yeah.
So they only pay them as they work?
They pay them as they work, is my understanding, and that's what it's, I don't know all the particulars because, but. But, the way I understand it is they get paid through the school year when they're physically working. And then the rest of the time, they do not get paid. Up until. Most of them, and I, I don't wanna say for sure, cause I don't know what all their start dates are, but, um. Most of them started since COVID, so they've been working. Uh, on grants or what have you through the school board all these years through the summer. Um, and so now, I guess all of that is basically went away, and so there's. And this all just come up, I guess, when schools been working their budget for the year or whatever, because they just, they just told me this within the last couple of weeks. And so they're not, they're basically gonna be unemployed all summer with nothing coming in, and then. They would pick back up in August.
I don't think they have that. I don't think, I think school board's trying to find money for the summer.
They're, right, they're trying to find.
Some, some way to go. Energy express, energy express, yeah.
And that's, that's my understanding is the school board was working on it too, but that's what we was trying to find out what we were gonna do with them.
Is their current paying pressure to making their, their problems in service.
Their current pay. Yes, their current pay is just a little bit under what the starting pay is for the deputy. Um, because they're on the school board's salary. Now, when we met with the superintendent and the director of security for the school. Um. They indicated at that time, of course, they have all their pay raises worked out by contract because they're under the. Their pay rates all come under the school teacher's contract. So they know what their pay rates are gonna be, and they said they would abide by that, so as those salaries increased, the school board would be putting more in. Now, I can't tell you whether the deputies goes up faster than the teachers, you know what I mean? Uh, I don't know.
The teachers, not gonna be going up this year.
Yeah, I don't know what the contract is, so. But they, they did consent to continue to pay the exact same thing that they would pay, whether they're civil service or not, they don't, they don't care one way or the other.
The one question I have right now, also, I ran into before, was. With them being our employees, they'll be entitled to their, to their sick time and vacation time.
Yes.
How does the school board wanna react if they start taking vacation in the middle of school year?
I think. Well, I'll be honest with you, they take vacate, they don't take vacation. I guess they get comp time or something through the school board?
There's some kind of comp time.
Four nine hours a day is gonna be eight hours a day.
So they take off, and it's, it's to the school board, I don't think, I mean, I mean. I don't wanna go too far out on the limb for them, but. It, to the school board, it, it's not a big deal that they take a day off just like a teacher does or anybody else. Uh, usually what they do is amongst the three of them, if somebody's gonna go on vacation during school time. They cover for each other, the three of them will, you know, like. If, uh, rumor's not gonna be in school, then whoever's at the middle school would cover for them, or if, you know. Billy's gonna be gone, then whoever's at the middle school down there would check on the high school, so that's, that's basically how they handle it.
And you, you've been having our day shift guys that are working since we're down one regional officer. Captain Winger has been having the day shift guys periodically swing in and check in the school.
Yeah, and they've been up there a good bit. I mean, they have a trial to keep an eye on it.
Any luck on getting one through middle school?
Honestly, with what we've been going on, I haven't looked, pursued that. Uh, I've had a few interests, uh, contact me, but outside of that, we really not.
Well, the other thing is that that's, and again, to me. We kinda need to make a decision on this. Before we stick somebody else in, because I can't even tell them what, you know. And I guess I can tell them that this is what you're getting paid, but I'm, if we had a decision on this one way or the other, because. To some people, you know, a guy that comes in here retired, well, he wants off all summer and he wants, you know, and he'll do it for forty-five or forty-six. Whatever it is they're making, you know, he may say, well, screw you, I, I don't wanna work all summer, you know, that's why we was trying to find out.
That, and if it doesn't go to civil service, we wouldn't necessarily have to hire a certified person. To fill that slide.
But if it goes to civil service, you got to.
Yeah.
We have to have two years.
Yeah, they, they gotta be, I mean, they would still have to be certified, I guess, unless the circuit judge would. But I, my understanding is under that program, they have to be a certified officer.
That's the board?
Yeah.
Yeah, through the, through the program.
Okay.
Two years of law enforcement and then certificate.
What, what are they considering law enforcement? That was that.
West Virginia State Certified.
Okay, cause you've got.
Two years.
Corrections officers that are.
Now, West Virginia State.
Classified to West Virginia as law enforcement through corrections now, because someone in that division changed that title. And.
Yeah, I don't know.
And although they are not law enforcement certified through.
There's some contacts that handle the program. I'll get you that contact information. See if any of that's changed.
That's, that's questioning.
Okay, I would imagine. Next few weeks will have better idea. On all that, alright?
That after we be. Our budget stuck to. Well, and they, we, we can give them an answer now, but I know Captain Winger's building.
And that's where, like I said, they, they knew we had brought it up back. And then they knew we brought it up again, and, and they're just questioning, they're asking me, wanting to know, like, what's the deal? And I, I told them, I said, I had told them that you was talking about the whole budget thing and it would probably be, but that's why we're bringing it up again.
They, they only have three more months until the summer, yeah.
Right.
No, when Jill gets us the information we need, we get all the budget requests in, we'll see what we got. I got a feeling though, this year, as we was in Charleston last week, things is gonna be kinda tight. There's gonna be some. There's gonna be some tightening up. Things done that shouldn't have been done.
But. That's like.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and we'll consider that and you get all the information there.
I'll roll right into the next thing.
Yeah. Still have. Uh, increase for supervisors.
Yeah, increase, yeah.
So, that one, it was just kind of the same thing, uh. Because we brought it up before, and I guess as far as trying to do our budget requests for the year, we was just bringing it up again, basically that. Uh. Cause it had just kinda been tabled with the last one that she's, and said she's wanted to wait till it's getting closer to the budget. Um, but Lauren, I know she worked that up there today. Uh. And my numbers and her numbers is within like eight or nine hundred dollars of each other. I think hers has got. I went with a, a flat figure, like mine was five hundred, a thousand, two thousand, and then she's got the, the change on there with hers. Yeah, but for just the increases that civil service had recommended. Uh, as everything stands right now today, to do, it would be a increase in our salary line item of sixteen thousand five hundred. Is what I thought, like I said, Lauren's is pretty close to saying that.
You're talking about total?
That's just to do the, the percentage increases above what we're paying currently.
Instead of the, that's like.
Instead of the, the what, based on the percentages and instead of the flat figures that we're operating under that. Um. To bring, and I guess, do, do you want me to, you guys remember where we was talking about the. If we do the percentage increases instead of the flat fees or the flat raises. Um, basically what happens is the percentage increases are the same as what they were when we started based on starting salary. But our starting salary has come up to the point, that's why the sixteen thousand dollars difference. Um, what happens is if we do that. Then the people that are currently in the positions, when somebody gets promoted. They make more than the people that's got seniority in the positions. So to bring that all up even is another fifteen thousand. So, to do the complete, to bring all the raises up and then bring everybody up into the new system as a whole. Is gonna run right around thirty-one. So I've got thirty-one five, and I think Lauren's got twenty-nine five, so.
Almost that sense.
Yeah, so that's where.
There was also a request that we're gonna make is that there's possibly this difference if I'm out of doing that.
And that's, that had been brought up, and again, I don't know how any of that works, and, and again, if I'm out of line, my. When we started working on our budgets. And he was at, the sheriff's asking me, like, you know, is this another word? That's why I'm asking these questions now, is because there's significant differences in what we're, you know, as far as making the request. Um, and so that's what I was just trying to explain to you, where we're at and what our requests are. Um, but I don't know how the whole opioid money thing works. But if that's a possibility, I think that would be worth looking at.
So there's nobody more frontline on the opioid issue than law enforcement?
And that, that's kind of my view.
But the thing of it is, how long's that opioid money gonna last?
Well, this is a one-time cost.
Everybody.
Bring everybody.
It adds every year though.
Well, that'll be in the, that.
That'll be.
This, this will bring everybody up, but then as the other ones get promoted. Then it will only be that, you know, when you get a sergeant, then you're only have the additional four thousand for that sergeant.
Saying, if you give everybody a dollar raise, it's just not for one year, that continues.
It's gonna increase the hourly rate.
It, it would increase your hour, hourly rate.
No.
Uh, I guess the re-appearing expense is, it's not gonna be thirty-one thousand dollars difference every year. It's gonna be sixteen thousand dollars difference in our line item every year. You, you, you are.
When it comes to numbers. I go with you.
But.
It's just the marbles people lost. It's just the marbles.
The ones you currently have or the ones lost? The ones you currently have or the ones lost?
Yeah, and then the bigger increases will come when somebody tests out for sergeant.
As, yeah. After we start leaving, that's when the bigger increases, and again. Uh, quite honestly, the biggest increase, I think, is between corporal and sergeant based on what we got now versus what this new system was. Uh, which, again, that's rightfully so, uh, because the sergeants has got as much supervisory. Responsibility really as anybody else, because they're directly supervising everybody all the time.
Now, that, that number would not be the same every year. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Is, that, that would be based on promotion or stepping into the ranks?
It would be the same until we added positions or as people promoted, so we would.
Wait to see what her money's gonna be. I like to see what her insurance is gonna be. We're at about twenty, thirty thousand dollars there.
I'd like to work on this paper a little bit, cause I'm happy adding up. I'm happy mapping there. Oh, I'm talking about, oh, none, none of these numbers are right, not many, but. Sixteen. I'll figure it out. We'll get time to look one.
Twenty-nine five's pretty close. Oh, you're going across that way.
Yeah, I never, I never.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I don't. I'm sure Lauren can explain this paper better, I don't really understand, but I know our totals is coming out pretty closely to say it's.
Yeah. Alright, we'll see what her income is. It's still the.
He's got, he's got something else.
The cat countertop. He talked to us about that.
So that's all the, I don't know.
Yeah.
I thought of it coming out of opioid and do, I mean, is that something? I mean, I know that Amlin's story really didn't go through an application process, so I mean, they wouldn't have to actually wait for an application process to get through.
Well, you know, the commissioner can, can discuss that if anyone, I'm, I'm not. A fan of the opioid money going to law enforcement, because I feel that the opioid money should go to. Uh, prevention and rehabilitation. Then law enforcement side. Uh, that's my, that's my opinion, and that's the opinion of the committee, the. Central County First Committee, I know that's their, I'm not, shouldn't speak on her behalf, but I'm. Ninety-nine percent certain they all feel that way as well. Um. And. But it's something that us three commissioners have the ultimate decision on.
It's a, you know, it's a one-time pump, the thing. Just like helping out the Emmett, it's already.
But it does bump up their salaries, the next year the salaries gonna be the same, and that bump's still gonna be there, so.
Yeah, but also note, the largest bump is those officers that will be leaving in the next couple of years. Uh, cause the lower deputies haven't been promoted up through.
I'm gonna say something, that's not necessarily correct. Because you get them too high, they'll never.
That's.
Don't think you get that magic count up there about how yours is, Roger?
Yeah, right, yeah. Okay, uh, yeah, we'll, we'll have to look at them and see what her income is. Oh, Joe, about your countertop? Your tax on.
Yes, I tried to get an estimate for that, but we're currently right now, the countertop exceeding out onto the, out to the customer or the, the public. Is that much?
I know, I looked at it the other day.
And I've, I've seen, uh.
Not much.
I'm, I'm not picking on anybody in particularly, but you know, some elderly people that have a purse and whatnot, they have nowhere, and it's. It, it's not fun to watch them try and balance a, a purse and write a check.
You, you don't have any idea what it would cost to extend it?
I, I'm not just off what I'm told. I don't have the actual estimate, but it's approximately three grand.
Is that putting in a whole new countertop, is that?
Not a new, just putting an extension to what we have. Yeah, I, I think.
We want to go the new route, because then like, you're tearing out a whole window, and you're going to, yeah, replace all that, so.
But we got a fill in that gap.
So this, this is adding twelve, yeah. You know, some babies have been set up there.
How much you can bring it out, about sixteen inches or so?
Twelve inches.
Twelve inches.
Twelve inches all the way.
Three thousand dollars for a twelve inch board to go across?
Just, just the countertop alone, I think, just roughly, I think was seventeen hundred. To match what we have there, the same company that.
Get it to match and then fasten it in there in brackets and everything else.
Now, I'm open to checking. For additional estimates if you like.
Did you get that estimate too?
It's through the company that's doing.
Doing a chance.
Yes, sir.
And it would match, I mean, there's a little bit of a seam there, but it's going to match.
That's what I thought.
They'll just put it right up to the other one.
Yeah, they would take the existing, uh, laminate that's on the edge, um. From my understanding, they're gonna drill and dial it.
Yeah.
As well as put, I think it, three heavy duty braces underneath.
You could spend more money.
I guess, I mean, it's need, uh, it, it needs to be done, um. I don't know that we can really make a motion or anything to verdict, though, we have a definite ask.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up in discussion, that I will have to, at some point in time, bring something to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I looked at that, it's not the best, it's not bad, the best.
Yeah.
I see, roughly three thousand, yeah.
Ish.
Ish. Okay.
I, I know the count, just the countertop alone was, I'm fairly certain it was roughly seventeen. Just for the countertop, to have it cut to length and width.
Okay, well, we'll see what, see what it is, and then we will go from there, is that okay?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to bring it up.
Alright.
Alright, got anything else?
I'd say thank you.
Yeah, if you've got anything else.
I don't think there's any more.
Okay.
Till tomorrow.
Till tomorrow.
Till tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, Tommy, I reckon you're next, sir.
Yeah. Alrighty. We'll make up for it.
You, where were you with Joe刚才?
Well, maybe, maybe JJ, you could, you could sit here and watch, you bits too, um. But this is for the, uh, I guess the budget of the, uh, special operations account, um, with JJ, JJ part of, um. Team also. So I guess in years past, we, we've got six thousand for the, uh, professional operations, um. I guess Lauren, Lauren messaged me today and, uh, basically like, explained how should come to the meeting and just make sure. Yeah, we can still get that six thousand annually here. Second, please, it's six, six a year?
It's like a, it's like a, it's eight.
I thought it was eight.
Yeah, that is ten, yeah.
Don't you need to leave, JJ? Exactly, you leave. You've already had for enough money, JJ.
I was thinking, that's the right, that's the right, this is money that already designated specifically for. Special.
It can't be used for anything else but emergencies in our account.
Yeah.
Special operating.
They're saying not to replace their equipment.
Yeah. So just to give you a little insight, so that goes, goes to help, uh. Purchase either new equipment, uh, or and or replace outdated equipment. Uh, we operate water rescue, um. High angle rescue, just ropes, uh, confined space, and also hazardous materials, um, and that's what we do right now.
You, so are they much money in that account now? It's about, it's pretty, pretty low, isn't it?
Yes, um, I can, I guess I come to the commission meeting in November.
Yeah, a couple months ago.
Yeah, and requested, um, to purchase, uh, some rope equipment, which was, uh, for rescue roof that was going out of. Date. It, it has, most of all that rescue weapon has a lifespan of ten years. And even, even if it's looks brand new, from a liability and legal standpoint, if. If someone would get hurt using that, then per the N O P A recommendations, it, it, it has to be taken out of service after ten years. So we get into a lot of issues where we have equipment that we have to replace every ten years and. Uh, Fountain got a rescue grant back in twenty fifteen for a lot of the, the rope equipment and, uh, what else did they get, JJ? A lot, a lot of special, special rescue equipment, which were coming up on twenty twenty five, and we replaced a lot of it. Through, through this, this money and, um, through the windmill grant has helped out tremendously, um. But it's something that is just constantly, we have to. Replace the equipment, um.
When did you ask it from the windmill?
We've been pretty fortunate. We've been getting, we've been getting the windmill brands.
Did you put in for that almost every year?
Yes.
Who do you push through?
So there's actually two, there's Black Rock.
Yeah.
And then Pinnacle, Pinnacle Mountain.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um. They normally send me an email whenever they, uh, are opening it up, but it's open up to the organizations within the community.
Within, yeah.
Um, which they, they basically. Awarded just about everything we've asked for. We use mostly the windmill to take care of like high angle rescue roof. Things of that nature, because being the windmills, that's what we would use. There, more than any rescue equipment. Uh, we normally use the, the funding for, from the county commissioner to replace like. Or rescue equipment, uh, hazmat, um, confined space, um. Just basically anything else that just arises. Like, for example, right now, we have an individual, we have to, we need to buy a dry suit for it. Uh, that's probably going to be. Nine hundred bucks, thousand dollars. So, uh. Hazmat, there's no really a return on investment. Guess I said that right.
Do you have the monies towards training as well, or is that?
Well, we're just towards equipment. Well, we go out here, we have a hazardous materials incident where we use our equipment, um. Materials to absorb, you know, hazard or whatever.
Yeah.
We have not been getting that reimbursed through the insurance companies. Uh, it's just, I don't know why, we feel really haven't had much success, so basically. There's no, there's no money to be made, just even up, up, keep up with the equipment.
Just your expendable stuff, you know, if you go out, you go out and start using it, it takes a lot of absorbent for traction for ever, or, you know. It, it adds up pretty quick, and Fountain's foot will build for all that. And if you guys haven't went and looked at it, not to hijack you, but. If you haven't went and looked at that truck, you really should. That's.
Well, I've seen this, yeah.
It, I mean.
Pretty neat.
This county can be, prior an EMS in this county, I don't think the citizens realize how proud they should be of what we actually have in this county. Uh, for the size of this county and the money that they operate on, I mean, you don't have to go very far to start seeing, uh. Stuff that just shouldn't be. And there, this county, for, for the money we operate on and, and what these guys are doing with what they get is pretty. It's pretty phenomenal. And, and that's, that squad is. There isn't much they can't take care of off that squad, unless you get a building fall down where you have a structural collapse or something where it's going to take, and that's just because of credit. Uh, but like you were saying, the training and stuff to, it takes, I mean, me and Tommy's text and everything, um. And you're talking probably at least six, seven hundred dollars per, per level. Uh, and we're taxing what, five or six things, and then, um. It, it just, it adds up quick. I mean, this, this, I know it's kind of, the money's always an issue, but with the amount of money you guys are giving them. They're doing really phenomenal things with it. And that stuff's not cheap. I mean, you go out here and buy a piece of rope for fifty dollars, and the same piece in rescue, to get rescued rated is going to cost you three hundred. I mean, it's, that stuff's, because of the, what you're doing with it, and you put rescue on anything, it's like putting tactical on something that's going to cost you twice, you know, and. This is how it is.
You guys usually have a good bit, don't you?
The, we, they run, I don't know how many special ops calls directly we run, but, I mean, they do run, and the, the thing is, is it's kind of one of those things, it's like paying your medical insurance every month. You hope you don't need it, and, you know, thankfully, we don't use it more than what we do, but when you do need it, you gotta have it, and. And they've run support to Allegheny County, they had a guy run up underneath that tractor trailer, and, and guys. Yeah, they, they do a really good job. I'm not as active in it as I used to be unless I'm out, and we get something, I still try to go, but. Uh, we're hoping to get a little more involved.
He was very, I know him, he was very appreciative, and he's doing pretty good.
Yeah.
Where you doing real good.
And that, uh, that equipment that the commission had approved to help purchase or actually purchased through Jeremy.
Yeah, that was all those struts and everything.
Struts, all that stuff.
Yeah.
He's come to us.
And that's, and again, I'm not knocking anybody, but they called us over there because they didn't have the stuff, and they knew we did, and, and that. Whatever money you all spend on that struts and stuff is what they used to get that guy.
It was saved a life.
It, a hundred percent did, and I mean, that's, that's not me talking, that was the, the shop trauma team that come from Baltimore and the people from Home Autra, I mean, like, that was a. That was a big deal, and them guys did a really good job over there. And if we hadn't had that equipment, that guy would have probably died right there.
Some of the, some of the items that we are looking at possibly in the future, we, we really need to look at, uh, upgrading our, our hazmat trailer. Um, the hazmat trailer we have right now, I think it's like a six by ten, um, single axle that we bought, used off of an individual, I think we only paid what? We're nine hundred bucks, but it's basically so overloaded. So we're, we're, you know, right now, we just don't have the funds and, you know, but we, we actually need to look at replacing that trailer one time.
After this weekend, we'll be doing pretty good. Right? That is the, by the way, that is the, if you don't know, the Hoister and shrimp dinner out there. For Fountain.
So we need to make a motion to, for the.
Not now.
Not yet, this is for the, this is for your, your, but. Yeah, yeah, so, well, we'll, yeah, we'll take that under consideration. I don't, I don't see a problem with itself.
And if you, we need to help. If you have a little extra you want to go, great, if you don't, I understand, but it, it really goes to, uh, I mean.
It's a good call.
It is, and it's not like. If we don't need to purchase something, we try to leave it sit there in the account and for a rainy day.
That's what you did in November, you had some sitting in your account, if I remember right.
Yes, yes, and, and to give you a little update on that, we did receive the equipment that was purchased. Um, which, you know. That only takes two or three months to, to receive an order. Uh, soon as we get a, uh, where we pay the bill, and then I can get a bill of sale wrote up for. For you all, where the fire department had, you know, paid for it, then I'll, I'll, I'll reach out, give, give it to Lauren and. Also try, I'll, if it's okay, attach a copy of the paid bill.
Yeah.
That we paid the, uh, vendor. Along with our, our bill to the.
We don't like that, because then when the auditor says, what did they buy?
Yeah, and here it is, right, okay.
Did you say how much was left in the account, did you?
Right now, I think there's only two thousand nine hundred and eleven.
No, there, yeah, there's not much.
There's, oh, a little less than three grand, I thought that's what it was, you know.
Okay, no, good.
Thanks, Tommy.
Alrighty.
Thank you. And we'll check with you guys, we'll wait and see what our budget's going to be, our revenue's going to be.
They get them on.
Yeah. Right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thanks.
That's the agenda for.
That was. I think it was just more. He lives out there, he married a court. I don't know what his name is. I know him. Just wanted to hear myself, you know, I can't remember his name.
I forgot you.
Well, we're, we're not for three minutes, but.
Oh, yeah. Initially, I would.
Yeah, the woman I had the most.
She never got back with all this.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thanks. Hey, Joe. How you doing? Black Rock is, no, that's right, I wanted Tom, don't, don't, don't run, don't run, it's making me look bad, because I don't run anymore. My back's hurting bad, I couldn't run if I wanted to, you know. Uh, Black Rock is for their, is one being opened, uh. March seventeenth is when this one opened up. I sent Kelly a message, she just got back to.
Okay, so you want me to tell Tom?
Yeah, if you, well, I can send him a text.
Oh, you're the same one, okay. Ben, where would they put us out?
Um.
Said, Ben, where would be on that?
Um, you're on here.
They usually send us a press release. What is, you need my lounge? Good thing this tomorrow you met.
Yeah, I'm gonna be here all day tomorrow. Got work to do, I ain't got time to be here.
Me too. I'll just go back to the office, have to use a little work. Alright. Hold on, hold it. Means, uh.
I'm waiting for you tonight, I'm gonna wait.
Thanks, people. Yeah.
Would you want your reports? Your reports? You guys were all at Mineral County days.
Yep.
See.
Um, uh, let's see, Tuesday, county commission meeting and board of equalization. What day was that?
The last meeting, what was it? February the eleventh, sir.
Yeah, February.
Yes, you guys took off that day on the mineral county days, okay?
Mineral County days, that was the eleventh through the thirteenth.
Yeah, and then did all three of you go to the county commissioner and associates' meeting?
Yes, yep. Uh, we have board of equalization on Friday, the fourteenth. We were all there for that, yeah. Um, we had a, uh, Minko first.
I had on Tuesday, the eighteenth.
Minko first, mineral county.
Yeah, mineral, yeah, mineral county first.
Okay, not Minko, can, can, okay, there's a Minko.
I, I shortened it in here, Minko, Minko first, mineral county first.
First meeting, okay.
Uh, so then the nineteenth, we had a budget meeting all three of us here, board of equalization, six pro.
We've had four of those, by the way, four of them. One of them, I wasn't here for it, I don't remember which one it was, that was the fourteenth.
Okay, uh, no, that was the twenty first, I'm sorry.
Twenty first, yeah, it's twenty first, I was at the West Virginia court meeting, and you guys had board of equalization. And then county commissioner association, and that brings us to today. We got, we think they, it's. Um. Uh, one for the sets, meeting on the eighteen, I was there also.
And that is what, S A?
The Union Economic Development.
Okay, wait, C E V S. Okay, so, okay.
Um, the eighteenth, I was there, I should have been mineral county first, and then for our, and fire department, February eighth. Um, had the budget meeting on the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Building commission on February twentieth. Um. Where are we at today? That's it. Be up on top of everything else that's. Be up on top of everything else that's.
I, I was at all the board of review meetings, I was at the workshop meeting, we heads the budget. I was at the Seds meeting, I had a region eight, planning development meeting and of course, I need Charles to. Both times, mineral county, that was in. County, community situation, let's bring that.
I'll do a couple of things to add. Um, as far as I've had, I've had a conversation with Gary Howe about. Next year, Route fifty will be a hundred years old. And he's trying to put in a thing over in Burlington, that Burlington Fire Hall's property. The drive-through thing where you take pictures like they have out on Route sixty-six. So I'm working with him on that, um. Think he's getting book tech center to build the sign or build the big. It's like a big tunnel type thing, but it's just one piece of metal and drive your car into it and you get out there.
Big enough in case somebody. Is it big enough in case somebody does a bigger truck?
I hope so. And, but I've been working with him on it and Burlington, Burlington was. Trying to get prices on building a road and then I opened my mouth, probably put my foot on the mouth, but I'm gonna build myself. No cost, anybody donated. Over right over there.
Where's it gonna be in relation to those ability in the trial?
That's you, I don't know where it's gonna be, it'll be this side, on the, on the other side of. Of the, it'd be easier if I just bring it up to the back and show you.
I have today, eleven o'clock, uh, region seven, so.
Right here.
The worst, the fire department.
Right here again. Fire department, there's that little track, there's a, we'll put it in right here. Will be a loop right here.
Well, that's before you get to the fireplace. Well, depends on which way you're going, you're going, if you're going east from here, you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here in that field, I think.
You're gonna turn in, you wanna turn in this lower entrance. And there's gonna be a loop right there.
And there's a lot of cars packed up, they can go around now.
Yeah, and they got, yeah, they got all this room here, so. Burlington Fire Department's on board with it. But, um.
Helped the restaurant.
Yesterday, yeah, also yesterday, we met with, um. A couple of more scenes, um. Chief of staff, John Finley, and then we ended up running into him in the hallway and talking to him for a while. That was outside of, well, county commission association.
That was in Charleston.
That was in Charleston.
The, the other thing is I've been getting a lot of phone calls, messages and stuff about. This next era, there's cards sent out, I got one too, for survey, so if you got a card in the mail for a survey. It, it's the next era, next era, I think. So, uh, there's a proposed high tension power line to go through. And they met with each one of us separately a few months ago. And it'll go through mineral county and north into mineral county. Um, I don't have any information here, I didn't bring any card or nothing, but if anybody got a card. You could go in there and you could see they have a proposed map. That map, what they told me, they was gonna send out a map, the, the highlighted area is like two miles wide. So it's hard to tell where it's gonna go through that. There are people calling and saying, oh, it's right over my house, they're gonna take my house and. They have, what they told me was. They wanted to string it through without taking out anybody's houses or buildings. So whether that happens or not, I don't know, and I don't know what we'd be able to do. To stop it if the majority of the citizens don't want it. Um, they're still in the very beginning stages of planning and stuff, so, but there is a survey, you can fill out a survey online and. And if anybody wants to send me a message or email or text or something, or call me, I'll get my card and let you know what that is. So, what they told me, it would hopefully be right, right beside the other higher power outlines is what their goal is. But like I said, the map is.
Yeah, that's the goal, go right beside another power line, there. Still a lot of houses, all them power lines down, and there's still a lot of houses right next to them, so. They got two of them, Murphy, very kind.
It's coming through there again, it's gonna go that way, it's gonna, there's a clear. Their typical map proposals.
Okay, anything else we know of? We've got any questions, comments, please?
Of course, we will be having budget meetings tomorrow, starting at nine o'clock, if they're the one.
I'll have to watch online, I have an appointment tomorrow morning.
Well, they won't be here except we will be leaving at eleven forty-five, go to the development center to have lunch out there, that's our next appointment for today.
So then I come to that's.
All the meetings and the committees.
Can't ask for money.
I'd like to ask you a question anyway. About something here, later, more. I want you, I've already asked one person. I don't, I haven't got a response back.
That, that power line you were talking about, you said in the north end?
Yeah, we're saying the county.
Where about is that?
Like Lloyd S P. You know where living good places down on Knobly? The big power line that goes through, it's supposed to be close there. It's, it's supposed to be good, it's supposed to be close to that. Uh, if you get down Knobly Road towards Short Gap, there's, you'll see a huge power line. It's supposed to be close to that.
Actually, the highlighted area that they show is actually goes over my house as well.
It does, yep. Well, you're gonna get a lot of money on that.
Key card.
Did you get permission? That's your kind of bill, Roger. That's my kind of bill right there, sixty cents.
Eighteen dollars something, right?
Yeah, that's great. Four, well, price cost them.
Every day is like thirty dollar B.
Yeah, it was very costing sixty five cents to mail it. That didn't make sense at all. Is this for the, uh? That's nice. Gonna make her happy. We'll see everybody, take care.
Only wait, I wait.
Well.
I wait.
Uh, if you don't mind.
I wait. Lauren, do you just need a copy of this, this meeting?
Yeah, yes.
About to snow in here.
What?
It is cold.
I think it's cold.
That's why I wear a hat.
Alex, you don't live in the city limits? I don't think. I don't know, I'll have to check.
I forgot two things, I'll work on the state mountain.
What, I asked somebody else about that.
If you have to eat my papers, not to the others.
Right now, we've got three here in mineral county, nobody should. I'm gonna take it up, point you for that. I have to check. I was just wondering if you could use the survey, I asked. Look on the board, you know, you know the board that we met up at the candleware, it's on that floor. And they, they handle planning and development, they, uh, like. Sewer, water projects, drains, springs, for all that, plus other things, they've got their hands on a lot. And your representatives from five counties, it's ended every, they don't have meetings every month. They have meetings. You have the percentages, the percentages, that's right, I don't understand the percentage thing.
Percentage of the base.
Big sign over to.
That's what they said. They're already were paid five hundred, so the difference that is five oh one sixty. And then like this one here, it would be two hundred three twenty, they already got paid a thousand, that's why the difference exists. So that, this is the difference of what they had gotten.
I'm just trying to find something.
I don't understand that, what, what's this difference over here then?
That's the difference, this is the difference of these added together. They're actually got.
On the board.
Two, four, six, eight, ten, the percentages. Because right now, when Roger, when Roger tests for lieutenant. And you would get, if you guys prove that, you got the five now, then you could actually be made just ten thousand dollars more than Chris is. Eighty thousand dollars more than Chris and Chris given lieutenant for. Yeah, man, I'm having email issues, I can't reply or send, I can't now. But I haven't been able to reply any time to be here.
Oh, thank you, I know where that is now.
Jenna does them, but you can't write it last day. So, uh, Rachel knows how to do them and Rachel is going to come down here with me. And show me how to do them and we're gonna show Cody how to do them, or say Doug how to do them.
Switch it over to the, I don't know, I didn't know that.
I think you talk about, uh. Bail of Thorne, uh. The key fob.
Oh, is it just, cause he's security, the security thing is what we were.
See, we have one underground.
The more people that know how to do it, as far as I'm concerned, I'm okay with, because.
Yeah, I feel like they're a little screwed up right now. And like Roger has, uh, a keychain pass and a card, which is not necessary there. Because too, we're all in the same system here and another one center, and so everyone could just have the. Key ring, um, to get in here and.
Yeah, that's all, key ring, I don't want that card, and then. Um, but actually, I need, did I have a couple sets of keys, sometimes I have a truck or I have the random or.
See, that's why I have two keys, but I had taken off because this week on my keys and I have to carry my keys all around.
Yeah, but I, I do that too, but.
Well, how do you feel about, uh, G S D, my people? Cause Chris is the main one that comes from G S D. Um, like the science, like to get access.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't, they have access to the Apple Works Center.
Do they have a phone?
And see, that's.
Global and. They have cards to get and break in.
I never thought about that.
Mine right now only works here, doesn't work anywhere else. I can't get into the courthouse or.
See, this one, if you go up on top of Valley, you can see, when you look back through the saddle. If you could represent. We think about. They keep, the other day, we had our meeting up there, if it wouldn't been for a couple, one line, we wouldn't have. We wouldn't have enough people, nobody's wanting to come in. You get a free meal.
Or what, the present?
It was, I, I, I've actually learned a couple things.
Yeah, it's. Region eight does more than people realize.
Well, I tell you what, since I've become. I have learned so much.
The only thing that bothers me right now is what they've told us in Charleston. Justice didn't do what should be the best. You know that, we're in trouble. It's, it's, I know people's getting mad, Morsy, for cutting things, but the man don't have a choice. Cause he left, what was it, four hundred million dollars in red? The total will be. And there's, some of the bills is coming up, I really like some of these bills. Somebody pretty neat.
I look at it as like, I've lost a couple different jobs. But one through NAFTA, but anyway. I look at it, whenever somebody comes in, they always restructure, no matter what, they always restructure. I'm like, that's just working, we just, we fought another company, they come in and they restructure. So you always wanna lose something, no matter what.
Where, where'd you work?
I worked at the glass plant.
Oh, you did?
Didn't you work at selling instead? I thought you worked there.
You worked out there, did you work under Steve Mutter? He's, this Monday coming, I think. will make four weeks of his really working.
Well, I go here. Too busy talking. Black and stone.
Oh, okay.
And I wrote there his house up that Monday morning. And his car, his pickup was going, and I said, I wonder what he was saying. And because I wanted, I wanted to get something off of it, because he's, I, I know where his key is to his house. I know where his key is to the building, and he knows where mine is. That's the way we do things, you know? He's a good neighbor.
Family signing each other's papers here.
And anyway, he, for the hotels, we have signed each other.
But they're not jackets, so.
And he said, I said, man, where you at? He said, I'm out here more times. He said, I have heart. His, his arteries, one of them, during his arteries, which one hundred percent closed.
Lauren, if I bring these bills like this later, like to the meeting, do you want me to make jackets for them?
If you want to.
Do a bypass on you.
Because then it would be originally signed like that.
And he just dropped off stuff by four.
He's been out here Monday. This Monday should be, I think it's four weeks.
Wow.
They make it cold in the.
I've been watching the. You need his number. If you want to call him.
I guess someone's changed.
He wants to call him, let me know tomorrow.
Frost.
Well, here.
Don't eat frost now.
Yeah.
I think he's over sixty eight.
I got a bad motion every night.
You know, I'll let you write it down. No, I mean, that's.
I'm like, I don't know if I can see it on my.
Oh, it's zero four. Eight one three. Twenty one, uh, twenty seven, twenty one. Yeah, he's got, he's. I called, I talked to him last night after I got home. He's, he sounded depressed. I think he's a little depressed. I mean, I got his mail out in my truck. I've been picking his mail up for him.
You're recording. I need to be able to.
Well, I don't know. But I didn't say nothing to him.
I'm glad my.
Still picking up. You think it is? Oh, yeah.
I thought you better mind.
Steve is, I hate this with him. I really do. It really bothers me because he's a good guy. And I just hate to see you guys. I hate to see the truth there. Both.
Well, I can have it here that you change.
Well, you know, I'm not.
I'll, I'll miss church again on Sunday.
Oh, you will?
Yeah.
Last Sunday was so good.
It was actually. Really? Oh, I'll give it.
I'll give it to you. That's what church always looks good.
Oh, it was, it was just those kids just fascinating.
Very fortunate habit there.
I lost that, I know. He always.
He almost said, actually, he needs to have a son.
Yeah. But let me know about that, because I gotta talk to him.
No promises, but I would refer that.
All right. Yeah, tell your husband to use Steve a call.
I'll tell him. I got this way, correct?
You go anywhere you want, yeah.
Wherever you're parting.
Enough.
Thank you.
See y'all. Have a good one.
You too. Yeah.
See you in days.
They're all. He's worse.
Well, when I went to this, they had a different batches. Then we get this, but then we get a sense of doing this separate batch.
I'm glad you're not putting a bunch of them in a pile now. I like that.
No, but then we get it, and we have to get them out. It'll be nice when we can pay them with a key card.
Do you know Tommy Garrison? I know we're online. I know that. You know, they, they lost my check. Well, I ring rings a check to them every month, and they wrote it. She called him yesterday. Maybe it was Monday she called. Or yesterday, but anyway, she talked to me and no clue what it was. He said, well, you only paid a hundred and forty dollars. We show a hundred and forty dollars to your account. She said, no. Because I get four eighty, but I had to pay. He said, no, it's two hundreds. Oh, no. Uh, they had wrong mess up. She called again this morning and got somebody. They did have to get it straight.
We're still in. Trying to keep it on lock?
Yeah, we're still got.
Hey, did you get a thing from Cody? You can sell another check. Which you, you'll get these copies that fill in there. That's the line.
From, from away.
Yeah.
They didn't all coffee, so I like.
She's, she's, oh, I got something else. For you too. I'm all good here, Dutch.
Pass me the exoneration and the estate.
I have looked at the estates. I did the exoneration. No, I did the estates. I haven't looked.
With the estates, I do want to bring up that we have two. I don't know where they are.
I think, I think. I just, people here some more for you. Oh, I'm, I'm, boy, I'm telling.
We have a letter of resignation for the Natalie Hamm estate. Um, she has a letter here. It's a two-page letter. If you'd like to read it. Um, just do some issues that she had, and after speaking with her attorney and trying to, um, collect the assets of the estate, as the heir has already apparently has had possession of several, and, um, there's two heirs to the estate. And that's.
I got a question.
The heir will be coming in and qualifying for the estate after she resigns. So to her letter of resignation, to accept her letter of resignation from Lori Mallow for the Natalie Hamm estate. You want to read that letter and make mention of that one?
Do we have to then? If we're reading that loud?
No, you don't necessarily have to read that loud. You just want to read like.
Do we have to appoint somebody else then?
Um, once you accept her resignation, then the other, I believe the son is gonna come in and open the estate. And yes, that he bonded.
This, this protest in Regent eight, is that coming out?
Yes, it's coming out.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I saw.
Twelve and thirteen. Um, and then we also have a co-administrator of the Robert Suter the third. I know, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, Robert Suter the third. Um, a co-administrator, she's asking that her brother be removed as the co-administrator. Uh, so we will have to set a hearing for this estate. And then it goes from there. So I'll let you read it.
This felt, is this for the chase call?
No, I believe that was for the tenting of the windows. Um, the.
Oh, for the, okay. I never looked it up. You don't know how many, how much we get from this? You don't know how many we have in the county?
Kim and I went to the budget meeting yesterday. Um, this was stated on your shelf.
So is the son of of Natalie Hamm want to come in and do the thing?
He's the.
He will be the executive.
One of the heirs, so he.
But he is.
He has possession of, yeah.
That says David Lewis Hand. Son of Natalie. An inheritor to be. Are we necessary?
Natalie is the decedent.
Oh, we assume that here's the, yeah. Oh, who's Dutch?
David is the son.
David is the son, so he will be the new heir.
He is the heir. They, she, Natalie had two children.
Okay.
Um, and he will probably most likely come in and finish up the estate, if, if at all. I, I don't even think he'll come in.
Did you read all this?
Oh, I'm very aware of the situation.
Okay. He probably won't come in.
No, I have probably more than what's on that piece of paper.
If he does come in, probably we need to make a phone call.
Yeah.
If he, um, let me read it.
He already has possession of a lot of the assets. Um, she was very limited in what she could do, and the stress of it, she's, she just called and said she, you know, per her attorney, she needed to step down, resign. Because she really wasn't. Um, I'm not sure I'm being, sorry, just I watched what I said. The other heir has special needs. Uh, so she was ensuring that, um, the other, uh, the daughter was taken care of. And that's about as much as she was actually able to do, um, at this point. So she just has to go ahead and resign.
You want me to sign that was?
Yeah, just initial down at the bottom.
Just to make sure that we have to, uh, I haven't read it yet. Let's see, resign, here you know, and there, did I miss one?
Yeah.
Um, then they have to, um.
Well, if you just accept her resignation, the estate will just step there.
Until we either come in for the family appoints on that.
Once you accept your resignation.
Roger, you got us all messed up.
I know.
Sitting here talking. I know. It won't hurt a thing. Yeah.
The estate, trust me, you don't want.
Yeah, make sure I got it.
Process, but there's a lot in those states.
Well.
He got, he doesn't play the band.
And, yeah.
Estates are a whole different, whole different.
Oh, good.
Here's this one, Dutch, if you want to read this one.
Okay. Wait, I have to sign anything up about. Um, well, I'm not gonna say, you got, before we go any further, I have motion to approve the exoneration.
Wait, you want to include my agenda? Oh, my gosh. Okay, here. Exonations, you say?
Yeah. Nobody wants to make a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the exonations.
I second, I approve that also. And the estates.
Here. I make a motion, we approve the estates. I'll second that, approve that also.
And then for Hamm. You know, wait till everybody gets a chance.
I want to. Yeah, I never, you mean that right there or that letter? I haven't read it either.
Yeah, I thought you did. I, I needed it. Okay. This one? I hadn't read it yet. I hadn't been reading it.
Roger hasn't signed off on. They done shoot at the time on that.
Oh, do I need to sign it?
Roger didn't.
Oh.
Initial.
I just need the initial. There. I did, I need the initials. I signed it. Do I have your initial too?
Not that one. That was, but these other ones Roger missed.
Okay.
We can have an extra item back here.
So for the reimbursement for the pro officers, we actually, that'll be going into General County because they're paid out of General County, so that would be a check would be, I had it made out to Board of Ed, and I was like, oh, no, wait a minute, that's one of you guys are reimbursing General County. Um, and then for Dr. Irving, that is actually WVU Medicine.
Well, I'm not a hundred percent sure yet. We're waiting on. We got some approval stuff to do yet.
Waiting on contract with them. WVU and that kind of thing.
We were trying to enter those purchase orders. And, uh, because like the three D, it wasn't. It was, in the minutes, it's approved as three D, but it's not even anything close to that when the.
Now, this, this is the one that.
Oh, really?
They work for the county.
Yes, yes.
I know who they are.
Yes.
But Ruby and Bob both is past. This is, this is their children's arguing over this stuff.
Yes. And they had it worked out when they were in the office. Um, all the details were worked out, and then it.
So this was done back, uh, approved for her to take the estate, and now, now she's not back when Jerry was in office.
We refer to Hammer Shooter.
A hand.
Hand. Um, yeah, she was appointed. She went through the process that, all the estates that we did through. Um, I guess that her main concern at the time was to take care of the special needs, um, that that was addressed.
This was from back in August twenty seconds. So are they, are they coming in?
We're here. We have to set a hearing date today, that's tonight, that's what we're doing. So usually, I mean, I don't know whether it'll affect them morning or day. Um, evening.
We gotta hear a we gotta hear this one.
Shooter.
Shooter one? I don't know who he's. This is the one. I mean. How fast do we want this?
Well, we have to give notice. So we're looking at probably at least the end of March.
Twenty fifty, March. Four thirty. We have town commission.
Um, I think I've already scheduled Sunday for an appointment. We could do five o'clock on the March twenty fifth. Or you want to six o'clock.
That's whenever. Ask him when he can be here. That'd be the best thing to do.
Oh, no, we just need, you need to set the time because I need to go to order and send a copy of the order to him and say. The hearing.
You want to do it at six? You think that'd be good? They should be off. When you want to do it?
And then the second meeting in March would be.
Twenty fifth.
March twenty fifth at six P M.
That's the.
Okay, so we'll take the order up, and then we'll send that out to them.
So you're saying, I just want to make sure I heard right, six P M. Twenty fifth.
Yes, sir. So was that a motion?
I make a motion that we, um, get a little meeting.
For the Robert Suter's date.
Suter's date on March twenty fifth at six. P M. And nine. I agree. I saw a second. Is that, is that, um, we start the meeting the same way?
It's just a regular appointment.
Okay.
But instead, instead of giving them fifteen minutes, we usually give them a half hour.
Yeah, okay, it take a while. What about this?
You just need to accept the resignation for Mrs. Hamm.
I make a, well, I guess wait.
I think it was Mallow.
Yeah, I'm good.
If you want. The resignation of, of the Hamm, this Hamm estate.
I'll second that, and I approve that also.
And with that, she was required to do a financial and send this back here if you want to see what.
I think. I hope I'm out of here before the Duchess estate comes up, because I'm down here right now. That thing gonna be that thick.
All of them, bank.
Oh, yeah, be all the debt, with all the bank accounts.
All the debt that I have.
I got a big one. I got a big one. I got to put myself in more than that. Huh? I said, I'm trying to put myself in, but I have some stupid reason. I'll tell you everything.
This was a inventory I had in the state that you wanted to see it. Um.
Is that all we we you we, what all you got?
Bills.
I make a motion, leave, do the account, pay the accounts payable.
And purchase order.
And purchase orders.
Second night or I'll prove it also.
Now we're in it.
I'm good.
That in? Well, you get time to think about it.
About the key again tomorrow, so.
I know, I got some issues. Um.
I do.
I want to make a motion that us three go into executive session for personnel issues. Okay. We can just leave it recorded and come out and we'll stop the recording or come out and get our clip session. All right.
Do I need a second map?
Well, add back.
Yes.
I should get out. Oh. Well, man, I I don't know what I did to it.
Should I stop the recording until we start?
Can you pause there?
You can pause it.
You guys should be that long.
I don't know.
Did you go to one of these coasters?
Yes.
Did you get one? Did you?
I have a pile of them to give to all the eleven officials. I just haven't got around to it.
Jill's been up here several times.
I meant to, I've thought about it. Well, I meant to give her one while she was here, but I didn't realize she was leaving. But I had um, I have a bag of them at the number one center. I thought I would bring tomorrow and then after the budget meetings, I would go around and try to get them out. I need to write their names on the back so I don't like, oh, did I already get you?
You're already.
I didn't get one. Yeah, exactly. Or I'll I'll give that to her. This is not be that one for her.
This is short recess.
I'll bring my coat in tonight. Just leave it in the car. I thought it'll be nice enough. I started shivering at one time.
Why am I just running around?
Well, I'm at the number one center today. It's really, really warm. My office sits in the sunshine in the afternoon and Rachel's been sick since she's got the heat jacked up. But she doesn't realize it heats my office first and then gets to hers. I had a fan running now today. And she was shivering in hers.
I say, we haven't quite figured out the heating and cooling and.
Like how it actually runs.
Yeah, like it will turn them, maybe like I'll turn it down in my office. And my office gets hotter and the other office gets warmer. And I'm like, so we're just trying to figure out what.
Who's actually controls?
Yeah, yeah. I'm like, I swear to God, I turned it. And I tell them, you know, you have to watch because it has heat and cool. So you need to turn the heat down when you turn the cool down or they're gonna be working against each other.
Right.
So every once in a while, I just go through and check, make sure nobody's like.
I just wish it was on auto, like it's just auto heat and cool. So you just put it, I want it to be seventy degrees in here, whether it has to be air conditioning or heating, I want it to be seventy.
Well, that's kind of what I'm working on with it right now because if you set the heat to kick on at certain point and the air to kick on at certain point, it should be at that happy medium, but it'll be seventy four, one room is sixty eight and the other, and they're both set at the same thing.
Yeah.
Like. Yeah, we've been trying to figure that out.
Well, in the in the dispatch center, it's always pretty cool, but we have all of that technology running that needs to be cooled.
That makes a big difference.
Yeah.
That that server just sitting in the front office in the old office was enough to heat that front office. I mean, it it was.
Our server room has its own air conditioning and it's set on like sixty five, so it's really cold in it and it's like breezy.
We've been moving around so many boxes and stuff and we're kind of just leaving the doors open from their storage rooms right now because we're, you know, carrying things in and out and I think we have all the keys. Yeah, I don't mind. The one door I shut and then we couldn't open it again. I said, okay, don't shut the door.
You have your shelves filled up yet?
No, I've been working on the main office to get out a little bit um before you start waiting.
Yeah.
Trying to make everybody happy. Kind of hard to do. Still feel yourself.
I knew it was here.
Roger, he's signing, so I tried to flip him over. The page he has, the signs on top.
Dave, I'm at fifteen minutes. You have another fifteen minute what?
Tomorrow's gonna be busy. They're scheduled every fifteen minutes.
Yeah. Where is lunch?
Uh. Development Center.
Where is that?
Third Street, outside of Street. The development, the the workshop. Feel like I should know where that is. They've uh, my my great grandfather, um, great grandparents lived right across the street.
Mm hmm.
And we used to ride our bikes up the ramps and everything, but uh his buckeye tree's still there, so.
Is there any more meeting that happens at the lunch?
No.
Uh, so you could adjourn to go up there?
Well. They more or less just give a tour and then we eat lunch and.
Are you done then? You don't come back down here?
No, I don't come back down here now. Yeah, so more or less we adjourned there. We just.
Okay.
Yeah.
Finally got the major disaster declaration from the president. Who was that? For the flooding downtown. Um. We went to uh Fort Campbell over the weekend and went through some of the flooded areas. And like on the map, you can see where you're just going over a river, like just a river about the size of this one, uh but it ends up being the size of like Fort uh uh Jennings Randolph Lake. Like it's unbelievable. There's so much water.
Fort Campbell, Kentucky, Tennessee?
Both.
It's on both. My nephew's down there right now. My brother lived down there for a couple of years.
Is he stationed in in the army?
My nephew, yeah.
How old is he?
How old is he?
Yeah. Oh, like he's been in a minute?
I guess he's twenty four.
I don't know. That's what I'm saying. Is he in the infantry?
He's in P.
Okay.
But my brother was in the service. He was down at Fort Campbell. And he was also at the Fort Wing Ray, Alaska. Then he got out and then his wife went in and their oldest son went in and now the youngest son's in.
Okay. My feelings are down, but he's leaving. He'll win the twelve. He's been deployed. That probably went down for the weekend, spending some time with him before.
It's amazing how much that place has grown. When the first time I went down to my brother's, there was like, it was the road was kind of like, it's a gnarly road. And it was maybe a year and a half, two years, went back down. It's Portland Highway. I was like, does he tell directions? I was like, you know.
Like right in front of Fort Campbell?
No, it was like, it was one of those sub areas of it. It was off base. It was off base.
Okay.
But I was like, I couldn't believe how much grows. You know, because I thought I was in the wrong place. I was like, I didn't, you know, like this is not the direction I went. It was, it just very different.
Yeah, Clarksville is like one of the hardest places to get around to me because like it's like a U shape or something and it doesn't matter which way you go, you're like, okay, I'm still in Clarksville. I think I drove for forty five minutes. It every time we go, there's a new development going up and.
Oh, it has. It's just.
Yeah, exploding.
And that's, that was, oh gosh, that was fifteen years ago, ten years.
So you haven't been since then? You'd really be surprised to see it now.
Yeah.
We see differences and we just go every couple of months.
My brother and sister all go down. Her father's down there, so they go down several times a year, but they they keep up with it and stuff, but um, yeah, I haven't been down there since, well, I guess probably two thousand nine. Cause my father passed away in two thousand ten and my brother had moved up here when Dad was sick, so two thousand eight, two thousand nine is last time I was down there.
Our next trip might be last summer. It's only um in two weeks to bring back all of his stuff. Cause he has a house right now, but
every couple of years and.
Yep.
I just say I I wanted to make it to Alaska when my brother was up there and I didn't make it.
Yeah.
That mom made it up, but um anyway, I don't, I don't have that desire why like that anymore.
Uh, I know, I, he's wanting to um get a station in Hawaii. Um. Uh, it just, you know. I just felt that I could fuck that far. No, only line.
Two or three times, not very many times.
Uh, yeah, I really don't enjoy it.
The second time we had to wait when I de-iced it. I'm like, ah, this is not.
Yeah. This doesn't give me a warm, funny feeling.
That and I had didn't rose, but I had a sinus infection, uh, which made it very, very pleasant, nauseated.
Yeah, that'd be miserable.
So then the Dramamine come back. I don't remember the trip coming back.
I found the more that I fly, the easier it gets, just like maneuvering the airports and just understanding where I need to be and how much time I have. But the flights itself, I like whiteen up of the seat in front of me the entire time. And uh the last flight I had coming back from Sarasota, Florida, I had a window seat and the gentleman, when I got to the seat, um got up and they were like, oh, well, let you know, I'm like, well, if you would just slide over, like if you want the window seat, they're like, you don't want the window seat? And I'm like, not really. I'm all about the aisle. They were kind of making fun of me because I was literally like I just, because they were so close, I just held onto the seat the whole time and then I just changed hands. But yeah.
Not a fan. The very first time we went to the airport when my mom's went up to Alaska to see my brother, it was quite comical. Um, being our first time at the airport at Dallas, we didn't realize that there was more than one terminal.
Yeah.
And when we got to the first one, we thought we were there. And we were watching the planes with the kids. We had the kids with us and uh, mind you, they were little kids, like
Mm hmm.
babies and like two, four, five year olds, okay? And um sat and ate, took our time, ate, watched.
Cause we're good.
Yeah, and they're like, oh no, that's the other terminal. I think she was in C or D.
To try to take a train to get to.
Yes, and this is pushed before nine eleven, so we could all go over.
Yeah.
So we get on the tram, we go over to the other terminal. What do you know, the gate's the last one down. Kids under each arm, luggage drawer, running down through there. We didn't make it.
Oh, no.
No, we did not make it.
Oh, no.
So we had to drive all the way home. We had to get another flight for the next day.
Oh, my gosh.
Drove all the way back home and
Oh.
went back the next day.
Oh.
So.
Well, you had a practice run. You knew exactly where to go the next day.
Quite comical. I mean, when you, when you see in the movies and you see the people running through the airports, you're like, yeah, that was us.
So the first time I flew was when I worked at Hester's, which became Conagra, which is now filled with pride. And I was working in research and development and we had a team fly to Farmville, Louisiana. And it was the first time I'd ever flown. And there were four employees and then three like senior people, one of them who flies all the time. And he's cutting it close because he flies all the time and he knows just where he's going, knows the airport, all the things. We're literally, because we had to also go to another terminal, terminal, cutting it close so and, you know, and we are running through the airport. I'm like, isn't this illegal? Like, aren't people gonna think we're like running from the law or we're stealing stuff? I don't know. It just felt really wrong to be like sprinting through the airport.
It's apparently a very natural thing and they see it all the time.
Apparently. But we had a whole crew screaming through the airport. We did get to the terminal and then. We did get to the terminal and then got on, it was like a big plane. And we flew into Colorado. And we had to go to another terminal and of course ride the bus, all the things. And we got to, we got to this long hallway, we go down there and I feel like we're just going down and then we go down these steps and go down these steps and we open the door and we're out on the tarmac. I'm like, you have got to be kidding. And there's like these yellow lines that you follow and walk out to your airplane, which is about as big as that table. And I was like, you have got to be kidding. No, it was like a little twin engine puddle jumper off. Then we took the last little leg. It was only like a 50 minute flight, but it was like this the whole entire time. And I'm like, I'm pretty sure all the bolts are working themselves loose on here. I think it was like seven seats or nine seats on the plane. I'm like it. Then on the way home, we also took that little one to go back and we sat, like you said, the ice or we weren't deicing, but we were in a very strong thunderstorm with the lightning and the wind. And I'm like, oh my gosh. That was awful.
I think my first flight, we went to San Antonio and it was a smooth flight going down. It was, it was a really nice flight, but we did hit some turbulence as we were getting close. And I was like, yeah, this is not, this is not natural.
Well, the little plane, it was, it was in turbulence the whole time. It like never stopped shaking. I said Colorado, we flew into Texas, not Colorado. But the big plane, now when that one hits turbulence, it's quite impressive and quite noticeable. It's like, ooh.
Yeah, it was like, you just struck out of the sky.
Yes, exactly. I think I left my stomach up there. Yeah, that was, I did not really enjoy that.
Yeah, we drove down to San Antonio to pick up cruisers for the city of Kaiser. That was a long time ago. Because there were better conditions down there, low, low mileage, but they didn't have the salt and the wear and tear on them. And so we went down, drove back. I just went along. I didn't drive back.
I was gonna say, that sounds like a good time.
Yeah. Well, it was kind of funny. We had, not, not funny, it was just quite a trip to remember. We had two flat tires.
Oh, correct.
Not at the same time.
And on the same, did you have one vehicle or did you bring multiple vehicles?
I think the one the time I went. I think they went multiple times the time I went. It was just Bud going down, getting one and I went with him and came back, but yeah, it was like, probably my fault on the second one because I was like, he gets the first flight and he said something about fixing them like, none of the chances. Yeah, don't listen to me.
The chances are good now that you said that out loud.
And then the second one, because we didn't have a spare, because we already replaced it. When the tow truck took it backwards, like I can't remember how many miles. It seemed like forever, like 15 miles, 30 minutes, like something had to go backtrack. And of course I had to wait and it was like, it was pretty, it was not funny, but it was one of those, but she just kind of shake your head. Oh my gosh.
So much for that. Of course, you said it out loud.
You got all day tomorrow.
Keyword was were having.
I think I mentioned the budget numbers in there. I get everybody's request.
I was gonna email you tomorrow for the amount for the for the AA with exactly that one, so I could put it in my spreadsheet. For opioid, no, for the that one that I just saw through there was Levy, wasn't it? No?
Bank of Wurley.
Is Amy starting to get a levy check?
Oh, that's what I needed to bring up. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, because Colby had called and I said, I'll do the jacket for it. I, sorry, I got a different, yeah, got bugged in the brain because the one thing was made out to the Innuis Authority for the opioid money, but it was for the Innuis Authority, made out to WPP Medicine. Yeah, I was gonna ask them if I could go ahead and do this quarter. And, and then of course the tournament is for the surplus that seems to be in there right now. We need to make sure that we have money for the fourth quarter because the collection revenue for these next couple of months is barely low. Like we've only brought in 4,000 this month and I think last month was only like two. So I said, there's not going to be enough collection to do that last quarter. So I said, if we can at least do this quarter early and then even if we did the fourth quarter early, then we'll have an idea because then our July collection will pick up for the first quarter. So.
Do you have to know what the exact amount was or you have to dig through? You don't have to dig through. I can get it tomorrow. It was 68 something, but I'll get it tomorrow. I'll text you or send it.
I have the check ready tomorrow.
Yeah.
Oh, I'll just get it. It's gonna prove it tonight. I mean, technically they grew it in the bills, but it was in there. I was supposed to.
Yeah, when you showed it to me.
He showed it to me, so I saw it. Okay. Well, maybe I better look through and see if there's any others I better make note of that I need to actually tell them. Just kind of, you know, everybody's trying to get their desk situated and their space situated and still trying to iron and stuff. A lady called and today she's wanting to get dual citizenship and she's wanting the naturalization papers from 1940. And I'm like,
oh my.
I understand your request and your need for this, but this isn't what I have right now.
Yeah, not today.
We have been keeping up on the the regular requests for births, marriages, but people are just doing it for genealogy or.
Glad you kept that short and sweet.
I don't know how short and sweet it was. I did short.
It wasn't short. That's what we were being trying to ask.
See, that's why I was one of the causes.
I'll make a motion to come out of the executive session and I'll snap the name myself.
And we have no.
I approve.
No action taken.
No action taken.
No.
No action.
Okay. Gave time to think about. Can we make an early distribution for the Innuis Authority?
Can we get a special motion for that?
Yes, because it's, it's, the third quarter would be made.
It's usually around first, first and more April. Yeah, I think we should. I make a motion to go ahead and do it early. Whatever that's called, early distribution, early distribution.
I'll second that motion and I agree with that.
Can you tell me what that is? 68339.
We'll try and have that ready for you.
Well, I'll be right here.
What did you say about, I heard you tell him something about key fobs. Does the blue key fob that I have work up at 911?
It can, but it doesn't because it's not programmed too. But yes, it can, you can only do, can just use one fob. She wouldn't have to have those.
You wouldn't have to have both. Yeah.
And then we could keep that fob, that card for someone else.
If you remember, we, one of the meetings, we talked about Potsch's.
Yeah.
Potsch's handling all the key fobs, but because it really is a security.
It, it, yeah.
Instead of Luke and the county handling, like the sheriff's department.
So if he, if you take my blue one and have it changed over and it's.
Paul P F. They don't like to take it. They can just do it on the computer.
The blue one, you probably need to take to 911 and have Rachel put that one on at 911.
Or she can.
Or yes, I could take the number and.
Yeah, she'll be able to just.
Yeah.
Get in there.
Well, no, the number on mine is kind of hard to read. I don't like.
You can't read this number. There's no way you can read this number.
Here, unless you got better eyesight than I do.
Oh, she can read it.
Whose is it?
That was my call to the fob there.
I got it.
Well, if you're going to do that, I don't need this.
Are we done with everything else? And then you have to assign the bills?
Make our list.
Any other business to the line? Or do you do something?
I'm just handing down here. I make a motion that we adjourn.
I will second that motion. Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So you just take that back up then, I mean, if you're gonna have my program, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Because it's.
Then you'll just have one key fob there.
Lauren, you want the date put in here?
Yeah, that, you was in the right, you was in the right place, Lauren. Here.
You want the date put in here?
No, no, that's for certified.
Oh, man, what happened?
What are you doing?
I'm getting to it. We have to get up.
You need to.
I have to move your.